A big recap of the things which you have done in the previous session. This entire class is being recorded like every time, so even after the class is being done, you can able to access it anytime for any number of times. And also there are special loud training sessions I will start giving very soon, so in that sessions you can ask questions as well. Those who are doing it overseas, some of them are doing it outside India as well, so possibly their timing is not matching. Here in India, it's around nine seventeen, in January, the class starts at eight thirty P M. We had a conference, I had a conference at university today, so. And unfortunately, I had to speak, why? I was one of the last few speakers to speak, where no one was there to listen, but anyway. Uh, not much speaker uh gets so unlucky to do that. So that's why I'm starting it pretty late, uh but in general, it starts at eight thirty. While the session is going on, you can WhatsApp me at nine six seven four five one five seven four one, the number I'm writing it on street, nine six seven four five. One five seven four one, any kind of queries and questions, I will ask you some, solving some questions and sending me as well, so that you will be sending it here, okay? So, uh without further wasting time, let's get started. So today, uh we will be starting our journey with a little bit of retrospective. Uh of the last session that is on supremum and infimum. Uh, so what is the easiest way? We know about supremum and infimum. First of all, we will not be show bookish. So don't be show bookish in this case, okay? Uh, one of, some of you have asked me about some good books about one of the important books, the Red Book of Real Analysis. Okay, so what is the Red Book of Real Analysis? Anyone know? No one knows? Which book everywhere, every book, which foreign author book you have been studying it from all the time? I'm finding most of the questions impossible to solve. Any idea?
Yes, Chan.
Yes, Chan. No, no, in graduation days, I'm saying only. So Red Book is actually, the cover of the book is red.
Bartle and Sherwood.
Yeah, yeah, one of the uh mostly used by the college professors. And unfortunately, when I was a student also, I have to go, went for this Bartley and Sherwood book. So this is consumed to be a red book of not only the red book with respect to the mythological or any kind of mystical thing. But anyway, solving this book is a mystery. So I came up with a thing that how to solve those books, so. Uh each and every question has been solved, okay? So. Uh, the first thing first about this class is if you want to work with that Bartley and Sherwood, so I can share with this. This is, uh, the solutions are. Um, not completely uh all done, but this will give you a good uh probability, uh this uh good uh push uh for your. Uh, solution region. So anyone who is interested to have that thing, you can personally text me nine six seven four five one five seven four one, I can send it to you. Okay, so why I'm saying this? Because I just want to get you out of the bookish kind of thing, because real analysis for competitive examination for. Uh entrance examinations, for I S I, for I A S, for all these centers, for I D J A, for C M I. So this is not like the thing which you have learned. Obviously, the basic concepts are exactly the same. But here, if I tell you about supremum and infimum, it's not about proving the thing. So there are different kind of structures will be coming. Here, whenever a sequence will be coming, okay? Or a D Allenworth ratio test, or an advanced test, or a RABIS test, or any kind of test whether it's applicable or not. So you need to find out the answer. So here theories will not say, okay? And the second thing about this thing, if you are new today, remember that whatever examination you are giving, I will not be giving you any kind of chances. So you have to solve all the parallel entrance examination papers as well, okay? So all the parallel entrance examination, uh you need to solve, so that is the only way out, okay? For example, if you are giving for I S I, you need to solve C M I, C S I, U G C net in that way. Obviously, the related topics and related questions, if you need the help regarding that of choosing the questions, you can ask me as well. So. I do with this kind of technique. Uh, so the first thing first.
What time you will be available, sir?
Yeah, what?
At what time you will be available, like at what time we can text you?
So for example, this nine six seven four five one five seven four one, in general, I don't carry uh this WhatsApp uh uh any time, I, I don't love to carry phone. Okay, uh so what you can do is you just text it to me at nine six seven four five, every night when I come back home, I try to answer all the questions from there. But in general, uh it takes around one or two more days to solve, sometimes I miss out. But if you just send it to me, I will be uh seeing it. Or you can send it to nine eight three six seven nine three zero seven six, this actually associated with other professors here as well. So you can send it to any one of the places, this is a safer place to send it to me, so, or you can send it here, whatever is your choice, uh and. Let's, uh and I will be solving that as well. Uh, but uh before solving, try to send me your prize as well, so it will be easier for me to solve it quickly, okay? And any kind of question papers, I mean any kind of year wise thing, so just mention me the year, I don't need to send me the question paper, so. Okay, for example, the supremum and infimum. So suprema and infimum, they comes with a word called greatest lower bound, least upper bound and everything. But I go with a very easy thing. So what happens if you just uh create a relationship with the maximum and minimum, but they are not like the maximum and minimum. So it's a greatest lower bound and least upper bound. If you just tell you a small story of this thing. So five less than X less than six, the, or maybe sixteen, then two less than X less than uh fourteen. There may be one less than X less than nineteen, then there may be several less than X less than twelve, then maybe five less than X less than. Uh eleven, then one less than X less than ninety, and there is zero less than X less than. Six point five. So now, if this is a thing with you, so how to find the common region? So this is exactly what we are going to do with in the entire G I F, N U F and all these things. So what is this? This is called the lower bounds. Okay, obviously now, why sometimes the approach of the foreign author books like Bartley, Sherwood, uh like Romita, like uh Scarborough becomes a little bit harder for us? Okay, or like Takayama, some of the books you haven't studied, but these are the books when I was, I, I was like a book buff when it comes to. Uh, my college days and the librarian uh didn't like me much because of this, he used to change a lot of books. So i- in, in foreign other books, you will see that they will say like this psi one, psi two. And they will try to use up a little bit of those kind of signs which are not there. And similar thing, this will be given in a book like alpha psi one less than psi and uh. Gamma. Two. Okay, and then these two, and again, this two. So in that way, the same thing. So it looks same, but sorry, it is, it is actually they try to say the same thing, but it looks very odd. So we will try to make it as easy as possible, okay? Uh, so the approach will be easy, but the conceptual understanding needs to be deep. Okay, so you can ask me any questions in the middle, even uh if you get stuck. So I don't want it to end up like a professor class which you have attended every time at university and college level. Which ended up saying that, well, things have gone, but we haven't understood anything. So let's put it like this, so these are all lower bound and these are the upper bounds, right? So if we talk about the common region, so we need to find out the, all the lower bounds are telling you about the lower cases, lower cases. So these are the lower span, lower span, if you say about a number, in a group theory. Concept, there is group, there is ring and there is field. So in a field structure, if we go, so the maximum span of the field is like this. But we need to go for the starting point in this field. I will go for this group theory in a very different way, don't worry. Uh, when I will try to teach you all this part. So this is the lower bound. So what's the lower bound here? So this is a lower bound, this is a lower bound, this is a lower bound. So what is the? Maximal lower. Or G L B. Okay, now you get it. What is the greatest lower bound? This is seven. Yeah, right, very nice. Now, the problem is, if we go for the, okay, let me just make it sixteen point five. Okay, if you go for the other part of it, okay, which is the upper bounds. So here also a difference span you get. So here also we go for the lowest point of it, okay? So that's here, somewhere here and somewhere here, and we want to see the face in the middle. So what is the lowest point here? That's eleven, isn't it? So in all the maximums, we are finding the minimum, and all the minimums, we are finding the maximum. That's called suprema and infimum. And now your common range is seven, psi eleven. So seven to eleven is the most common region. Among which, there is occupancy of everything, and it's the most, the safest region with respect to. The sequential pattern or the function to exist, isn't it? So here, if we talk about any kind of numeristic way, every function or every sequence at this G L B and L U B. We talk about the suprema, we talk about the infimum, and let's put it together, and we get. That if you try to write up anything, if I just put it in a very, very easy uh words, okay? Uh, so let's put suprema in this way. So if you have a function, uh if of X and that is X plus one by X, okay? And X is nothing but a natural number, and that is one, two, three, four, and to an infinity, so one plus one by one, so that's two. Okay, and uh there's no upper limit. Okay, let's put it like one plus this thing, okay? So this will be easier for us to put it, one plus one by one, so half is the value, and then one by infinity Z. So here are two possible values we can achieve. Can I tell you which is the suprema and which is the infimum? It doesn't matter, you don't need to think that it is lower bound and least upper bound, whatever is the max value, that always is the suprema, and whatever is the lower value, that is the infimum. And how to remember that, what is associated with G L B and L U B? And how you can, because sometimes you forget, is suprema equal to greatest lower bound, or is suprema equal to least upper bound? What is suprema? Greatest lower bound or least upper bound?
Least upper bound.
Least upper.
Yeah, sorry.
Least upper bound.
Yeah, anyone want to define? Anyone confused in this? Very easy, L U B, okay? So we talk about this basic structure, but the easiest thing is, it's actually the superior thing. Okay, and I N F is actually the inferior thing. So whenever you get a higher value, you can associate with the superior or the suprema or. An infimum, lower value in this way. So now, is it how I'm going to apply it at an university level question? So this is the easy way to understand, right? But is it always applicable, sir? I would say, yes, sir, it is applicable. How can we do that? For example, this two thousand eighteen uh uh question paper, if we just take. And they have given a question, A equal to T into sine one by T. Okay, I don't know whether I have done it in the last class. And T lies from zero to two by pi, okay? Zero to two by pi. Now, they say four options are there. So let's forget everything, let's find out. Uh, which of them could be correct? Let me just give you the options. Suprema of A is less than two by pi plus one by N by. Or all N greater than equal to one. Option B is infimum of A is greater than minus two by three pi minus one by N pi. Where N greater than equal to one. Option C is suprema of A is one and infimum of A is minus one. So two very complicated questions and two very easy questions, sorry, options. So let's put it in that way, A equal to T into sine one by T. So sine is there. Yeah, sorry?
Option C and option D are eliminated, sir.
Okay. So now, so you think that C and D are the correct answers, or A or B are the correct answers, or only A or only B?
Confused between A and B, sir.
Okay, that's good. Confusion is very good. So, you know, there is a thing in Harvard Business School, okay? I did, uh, I never went to Harvard Business School, so how I got to know? Because recently, uh one of my friend went there, uh, okay, uh so for a student exchange program, he taught over there. And there he attended as a student also, some of the business classes over there. So they're not a very interesting topic, so I will just tell you that small thing, that when confused, when in confusion in a business decision, so consider both. So you say, isn't it very easy, sir, to say it? Yeah, consider both. So I would say, utilization of that thing is very important. You will, we'll come to that part later, but the understanding of the concept is, so first thing first, okay? The suprema of this thing. So what is the suprema of this value? Any idea? So this suprema, if we just go in, in greater than equal to this, so here, so this is a two by pi part. Okay, suprema equal to here, two by pi, which is obviously less than two by pi plus one by N pi. So suprema is less than two by pi, one by N pi, so this is a valid reason to go for it directly. And now when it comes to infimum or the inferior value, so this value will be what? Anyone can tell me what is the infimum of this?
Zero.
Yeah, you got it right, perfect. Isn't it zero greater than minus two by three pi and minus one by N pi, isn't it? Zero is greater than any minus value, correct? Because this is a minus value anyway, if we just put it. So zero is greater than any minus value. So in this case, according to Harvard Business School, if you consider both, so obviously A and B both are right, okay? So I didn't say that multiple options won't be correct.
Yeah.
Sir, uh, can you please explain how the like uh means, option A you were selecting?
Oh, how I get the suprema?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, it's very easy. So all you have to do is just put the value over here. So you put A equal to, man let the zero down, zero set two by pi take a value, so you put T equal to zero and sine one by zero, this one value. And again, uh, two by pi and uh sine one by two pi, so pi by two, sine ninety value care one, so two by pi into one. So in that way, we get the suprema and infimum. Is it okay now?
Okay.
Yeah. So apparently, very, uh, it's quite like, how would I say it? Apparently, very non hurting type of thing, and. It's just a little bit painful while we are trying to solve this. So this is a perfect example of suprema and infimum question that is going to come in the examination, and you have to map it in your mind every time. So you need to think whether it is closed or not, whether, uh, remember that if I talk about this infinity, for example, is it a value, true or false?
False.
Yes, it's a false. So what is there? It is.
A limit.
Which can be determined.
It's a limit, okay, or it's a.
Uh.
Which cannot be determined. So a number which is really, really large, and I mean, anything that you imagine even larger than that.
Okay, so you're thinking it's a number, someone's saying it's a limit, and I said it's a value, and which is also wrong. So what is correct there? So this is also not very correct. I say, what is this?
Undefined.
It's.
Representation.
Okay. So till now, the answers are good, but we are not reaching to the pinnacle of our answer.
So what is the uh exact question? Can you please repeat?
Question is, what is this? That's the question.
It might be a symbol. It is a symbol.
It's a symbol. Okay, for example, like this.
Maximum upper.
It is a symbol with.
Right.
So it's a symbol.
Like, it, it can be. It works like a variable.
Okay, looks like a variable.
So symbolization of something that's really large.
Okay.
So it's the maximum value, maximum possible value that a function can take.
Infinity.
Yeah, that is how we live, know, okay? So first of all. This came from a Greek old structure of thinking, okay? This has a name, that's called, many of us don't know, Leibniz's sketch. Okay, it's act, what is it? It's Leibniz's sketch, sir. Now, this Leibniz's sketch is just like plus, it's like a plus minus into. You know, what is this? These are signs. Are they signs or any kind of, any, what is this? Obisca.
Like, oh, oh.
But these are like the operator, right?
Right.
Like D D X, like a law. So is infinity as an operator? Answer is no. It's not operate something. So we can't say infinity of X square plus two X equal to maybe five alpha plus, five infinity plus seven, we can't say it like this, okay? So in order to understand this as a higher level, we need to understand infinity with a different perspective, okay? So study of Leibniz's sketch is actually, they're trying to tell us that. Immeasurability. So this is the representation of immeasurability, and that's the sketch is all about. We, some of you got very close towards it, it's not a limit, but through the limiting concept, the unlimited things are represented by this, okay? So what we can say like that, uh, for example, if we take uh this thing. What is this? It's a spiral? Now, can anyone tell me, uh? Is it like an ascent, am I trying to represent something ascending, or am I trying to represent something descending through this spiral?
It's ascending, sir.
You sound like ascending. Everyone want to say ascending? Anyone want to differ on this? No one? Go on, sir, open forum. Yeah, sorry.
Like, in the order that you drew it, that's an ascending.
Okay. But at the time of examination, it is already been drawn, right? So.
It's already.
Here, we can't say no, we can't say it's either, until unless the sign is given. Okay, in this case, if it is given, then it is actually. Which you are saying, ascending. Okay, so we don't know when it is ending. And if it is descending, so it's actually ending up to some point, and maybe at infinite times if we go. But can you tell me, how can we represent this thing? So it's actually a logarithmic spiral. There's an equation to it, but it will make it tougher, but I am trying to represent it my special way. Let's try to idealize a, what is this? It's a rectangle. Okay, A cross B, and try to draw the highest possible square inside it. This is the highest possible square. Then draw another highest possible rectangle, so this should be, any side will be a little bit reduced. So for our diagrammatic representation, I'm making it like one unit, yeah? So again, the highest possible square, then highest possible this, then highest this, this, this. So is there any point where you can end? Answer is visibly not, but actually, obviously, there will be a point where we'll end. So now, let's just add up all these points. Yeah? Yeah, so in this way, if I just keep on adding, so this clears the visual illusion of the same thing which we created here. So the suprema and infimum is associated with these concepts, okay? So here, of a logarithmic spiral is actually giving us. The way to understand the basic suprema and the infimum's propagation mechanism. So this is what infinity is all about, we know. So this will finish up somewhere, right? So if some of you wants to know, so the equation of this thing is R A E to the power B theta, okay? So where X equal to R cos theta, and uh so with respect to the value, so A cos theta. So anyway, I'm not making it uninteresting, okay? And Y equal to R sine theta, so A sine theta E to the power B theta is the value. So you can put it on internet logarithmic spiral, you can lead it everything, okay? So that's why not point to waste time on that. Here, D theta is the radius of this, of the circle, and third is theta is the angle every time it is making with this thing. So you'll get it. So internet is available, you don't need me for that. So why we need me is the conceptual. Propagation with respect to these two parts. Now, suddenly, when they tell you that, uh, for example, in this thing. Remember that, my classes are not like, this is theory today, now there is sam, sam, now there is test. So it's all mixed up every day, every time. Obviously, you can choose to do the third part separately as well, okay? But uh the idea of understanding has to be juxtaposed together. So that's the only way to learn, which I believe at least, some of you may not agree. Okay, but uh, believe me, this is the only way to do it, and for me, it's very much applicable. And to your ancestors as well, who have cracked this entrance. So, chaliya, ab chaam start karte hain, uh, for example, if we talk about this thing. So by any chance, E and F, what are these two? Any idea? Let me, let me put it as subsets, subsets of R. Okay, these are two subsets of R, E and F. Okay, N is a natural number, and X is a fraction. So what we can tell about them? Are they closed or they open? What do you think? Closed, or the open, semi-open, semi-closed, or we can't just say. And here, we will be introducing the neighborhood concept of the structure very slightly as well. But let me just put it on the first thing. So how you think at this level, N by N plus one, what is this? N by two, two by three, three by four, four by five, what? So one by two less than equal to X, less than one, so we don't know whether we can reach it or not. So here, for all values of X, E is actually, what, bounded? Isn't it? So he is bound, but one is, does not belong to E. Why? Because if one belongs to E, then N by N plus one equal to one. Then N becomes N plus one, which is one equal to become zero, isn't it? Which is a contradiction, isn't it? Remember that, I'm trying to teach you in a way that, uh, the way. The interviews will be conducted, the questions will be cross-checked every time, okay? So this is the way to think. So why it is not a part of it? Because if you do it, then exactly this will happen. But as E contains infinitely different many values, E has infinite many values. Isn't it? But can you tell me the neighborhood to which these infinite values are assigned? Answer is. In the neighborhood of. One. Now you can say, why one? Why not half, sir? Isn't it? Can anyone guess why I said that E has infinite number of many values in the neighborhood of one? Can anyone come up and tell?
One is upper bound, sir.
It doesn't matter whether the upper bound or lower bound. Try to think in this way. So how one by two is directly achievable value that you have achieved, right? But one, you haven't achieved. So in this neighborhood, you will be keep on and keep on adding values because you want to reach to that value. So that's why the neighborhood of any point or set is defined by the point where you want to reach, not by the point which is directly defined. So that's the neighborhood concept, very easy. So neighborhood of a point means where you want to reach. So neighborhood based questions will be there, infinite set based questions will be there. So group theory ke liye aap log abhi se thora baat tayyaar ho gaya. Clear? So this is the basic understanding of it. Now, if we go to a little bit higher level, uh, just uh some space for it. Let me just talk about the F. So uh if, if this neighborhood is not limited, so E is bounded, obviously, it's bounded, but not closed, right? It's not, we can't say it's closed. Let's talk about F, one by one minus X, they deal with X which is a fraction. So where zero less than X less than one. So we can say minus one less than minus X less than equal to zero, isn't there any problem? I hope so, not. Zero less than equal to, the zero less than one minus X less than equal to one? Any mathematical mistake I have done? I hope so not. So now, one minus X again, less than equal to one, only if I take this part. Isn't it? So one by one minus X is greater than equal to one, we can say. So one by one minus X is one, so F is greater than equal to one? Yeah? So this is the conceptual understanding we can have. So what we can see. About this entire structure is dependent on the given values, whether it's a bounded, whether it's a closed, how to get the value. Just do the basic understanding is recommended every time, okay? Even by this, you can find the limit points and all. So these are the, remember that set theory and functions and differentiation, these all comes together. In real analysis, but unfortunately. But unfortunately, every time whenever our professors used to start teaching real analysis, they used to start with the concepts of sequence and series certainty. Okay? And we got transfused. So I also got transfused, I understand your pain and that's why real analysis used to become a nightmare. Many of us have, maybe have the least marks in our mathematics papers in that. Okay? So let's not fall into that trap again. Okay? So let's talk about this. Let's talk about a differentiable function. Okay? So F is a differentiable function in a real plane and obviously F of zero is zero. Now for X, which is also real value and one F dash X less than two. Okay? Then maybe if we take the limit zero to infinity. What we can say about F? What will be the behavior of X? Sorry, behavior of F. Is it like a bounded, unbounded, periodic, increasing? Decreasing, non-increasing, non-decreasing, confusing or impossible to say? What we can say? So first of all, here we can do it with anything.
Excuse me, sir?
Yeah.
Behavior of what?
F F N. F is a function which is differentiable function, F of zero equal to zero, one equal to F one less than F dash first order derivative is lies between one to two, zero to infinity, a beach may, how it will be? Would it be a periodic, will it be an increasing or bounded, unbounded or at least one zero value? What do you think? So let's talk about this, let's take a function. Let F X equal to. Now you can't take any function until always this satisfies this. At, I'm thinking taking three by two X because F zero will go to zero and F dash X will be three by two, lies between one by two. So that solves the purpose. Intentionally one or two K vision, mujhe three by two yaad aaya, that is one point five, bichon bichon wala nahi. You can take it F X equal to one point three seven two five X also, doesn't matter. Okay? There is no problem. Believe me, there is no problem, you can take anything. But don't take F X equal to X, then it doesn't satisfy this. Yeah? Or you can't take F X equal to X square, then also it won't satisfy. So you need to take a coefficient which satisfies the structure and this power needs to be one. Okay? So I've taken this, F satisfies all the conditions of the given segment. Now this F X is what? Is it bounded? No, within the zero to infinity, this is unbound. Very easily we can say. It's unbounded and it's a possible function. Again, F dash X, if we just take it. So isn't, this is giving you three by two positive, so this is actually an increasing function? But not bounded. Not bounded. So unbounded, obviously we have done it already. And F X equal to zero, when X equal to zero. So F has no zero in this zero to infinity. And this is also wrong. So if we say about, I told you about one option that at least one zero, this has at least one zero, this is also not wrong. Also not correct. But how to think about the periodicity of the function? Periodicity we know, F of maybe X plus alpha equal to F X. So alpha is the period of the function. So is it periodic?
No.
Okay, how can you say that? Because there is no value of F X with giving you X plus C within this range. Except Z. And that is not falling into this and they have not mentioned zero is included. So obviously it is non-periodic. So any possible zero level function or any kind of basic method you can apply in order to find this thing. Okay? So let's find out one question from our direct paper. Okay? So which directly comes into my mind right now, it came in two thousand, I think, I don't know, just forget the year. Skip the year now. E to the power N, two to the power N, E to the power N, plus two to the power N, whole by N. And N is a natural number. Find G L B. G L B means greatest lower bound. Okay? So how you can find it? They've given the values also, I don't remember obviously, but it will be around, it should be between two to three. So that part I can guess. So if there are M C Q and some options are like two point something, three point, four point, five point, so that is guessable. How can I guess? That's a different story. I will tell you later on, on this, but because otherwise we will obviously try with this. So A N equal to this, so E to the power N, two to the power N, one.
Kishu bolna.
Okay, some of your mic is on. Shekhar Shahat, my mic won't.
No. Sorry, sir.
Shekhar, next time when I'm trying to take the.
Sir, sorry, sir.
Never, ever again, okay? Because there are other people are sharing the same thing.
Cheers, yes, yeah, sir.
And it breaks the rhythm of the class as well. Okay, so now A N equal to this thing. So what we can take? We can take this E common, E always comes from, right? So one plus two by E whole by N and I think, I think one right. I think it's correct. Perfect. Okay. If you're finding anything wrong, you can tell me. I hope not. Okay. So now this thing.
He is also to be in this one by N bracket, I think.
Yeah, this is, no, bracket is one by N, the final bracket is this, E is outside anyway. I've written intentionally in that way because I want this two by E to be alone. So what is two by E? Two by E is less than one, why? E equal to two point seven one eight, right? So two by two point seven one eight obviously less than one. So two by E hold to the power N is also less than one. N times if you multiply a fraction, the fraction keep on falling. So hence, this entire part is a decreasing sequence. And what will be the limiting value if I go for limit N tends to infinity, one plus two by E by N whole N? It's one. So A to N is actually bounded. But bounded below by E, so it's bounded below by E. So the G L B, what we can say is equal to E. E equal to two point seven one eight. Now you can understand how I managed to say. Okay. So between two and three. So this is the basic concept of this thing.
Sir, can you explain it again, sir?
Yeah, sure.
E common.
Oh, how can I take that E common? So actually I haven't taken E common, I intentionally took, for example, what we have, E to the power N and to power, forget the power. So if I take E to the power N common. So this is one plus two to the power N by E to the power N, we can write A, okay? Isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Have I written it correctly? Because first one this, we multiply this, this is gone. So now you follow the pattern and the whole thing having a power one by N. So this N, this N cancels out and the rest of the stuff comes with this. Clear now?
Yes, sir.
Good.
Sir, can you please explain after this part?
Yeah, after this part you have separated the thing. So forget about this E, this two by E is less than one. Okay? Now two by E hold to the power N is also less than one. And now I have applied the N tends to infinity formula, so limit N tends to infinity, one plus two by E.
How did you get an idea that two by is less than one?
Yeah, exactly. What is E? Two point seven one eight, this value you need to know. Yeah? You know E series? What is E series? One plus one by one factor, one by two factor in that.
Yes, oh yes.
Here, from that thing it is this, so one by E means, sorry, two by E means two by two point seven one eight. What is this value? More than one or less than one?
Less.
Yeah? It has to be less than one. So that's why I get the idea two by E less than one. I think I mentioned it as well, E equal to two point seven one. Okay? So it's good that you are asking this much small question. So sometimes this kind of questions stick to our heart and we feel it badly after so many years. Okay. So these are the interior ideology every time which you need to have. Okay? So till now, any questions still from this question?
No, sir.
Okay. Yeah. So.
What's if the question is given and the choice like they have given like two point two three, two point eight, two point six, then how to guess, sir?
Yeah, then, then the value of E is two point seven one eight. So then whatever is the closest value, two point two three, two point seven one, two point two four, two point eight three. They go for two point seven one. If they give you the value two point seven two, then the answer is two point seven two. Because approximation to the second decimal place will give you this. Okay?
Okay, sir.
And in most of the entrance examination, whether it's S I, U G C net or I T jam. Usme, there is a booklet comes in, booklet the first page main. E value is two point seven one dot dot dot, asa diya hai. You need to take log of these values in dot dot dot, asa diya hua raha hai. So you can take that as your main harpoon in order to crack these questions as well. Okay? So they give you.
Sir, how did you conclude that G L B is?
Yeah, so G L B is what? Greatest lower bound. So lower bound is what? So I, in the, if you just, let's go for the beginning of the class, if you just go. So these are all lower bounds, right? So why we need the greatest lower bound? Because that is the safest zone in order to find the common zone. So here also, if we try to find the maximum of these minimum values, then only we will be able to find the greatest lower bound. So greatest value will only be achieved if I run the entire system from zero to infinity, which is applied over here. So every time they ask you this, so you need to run the system till infinity. Okay? As they, in the beginning of the question, they have given that N is a natural number. This is the most basic structural understanding. Let's go for something different now. Limiting values are always confusing and limit, for example, the squeezing principle of things. So let me just tell you about one thing. So limit and let's talk about, the only thing about limit which you guys may have missed out is the squeeze principle. So algebraic limit rules do not help with limits like limit X tends to zero, X equal to sine one by X, so this can be valued in. You have a limit X tends to infinity, sine X by X, this is a problem it involves. Okay? So squeezing this inequality will help us. So how to, how we think about the squeezing part anyway? So let's see, let me just draw something good. One I need this. The axis drawing too. So let's just this be our axis for today. This is one. This is another. Okay? So today, so far so good. So now, it's a whole of function and it's of some fluctuation zones. I squeeze like this. And when in this case also, the fluctuation zones are like this. Obviously, remember that these are not touching each other, so I haven't managed to draw it in that way. So everything is tense. So what is this? This is Y equal to mod X, isn't it? This is Y equal to minus mod X. And we can take a scale. So now, can anyone tell me this function? This is X equal to sine one by X the graph. Now the idea is to carefully choosing the inequalities to squeeze the functions of interest between the two simpler functions. So we are about to squeezing a given function into two familiar and simpler function. This is the simplest way we can say about this hard thing of squeezing principle. So this entire system, the Y equal to X sine one by X squeezed into two easy graph, that is Y equal to mod X, Y equal to minus mod X, isn't it? So we can say that. Ye jo portal function, ye jitna bhi tu dega, upar niche jayega, whatever the function span is, span hi kahate hain, jis raata ki ye pooch sakta hai. Okay? Have you ever been to a zoo? Zoo mein toh sabhi log hai. To zoo mein jahan par share ko raka jata hai, weather, lion, lion names, tiger is being kept. This actually are sometimes the most here open, ek ek aisa zone rata hai, jisme peeche me aisa cage me rata hai. And there is an open zone also. So where there is water and there is small and this is this is like the open zone. And this height is almost like forty to fifty feet. And this, there is a big wall of around twenty ten feet. This, pass me, a lot of upper se dekhte hain isko, yauna? So yet tiger is squeezed into this. They know that tiger ka total jitna bhi unchal pood hoga, iske andar hi ho. So tiger can't just surpass this. So even this tiger, this tiger can do the entire thing within this span. So we try to squeeze this entire graph inside this, so this is the squeezing principle. We can say minus mod X less than equal to X sine one by X less than equal to plus mod X. So a graph convincingly here showing that the inequality is valid. Yeah? First part done. Now as X tends to zero, both the left and right side of this three term inequality tends to zero. Left and right sides of the three term inequality tends to zero, there is no problems. So squeeze between minus mod X to plus mod X, X sine X has only one plane to go, or rather say one place to go. That is X sine one by X tends to zero as X tends to zero. So squeezing principle giving us the exact situation where the function is squeezed. This is a general theorem, the graph of the above makes it reasonable and we can omit the formal proof over, okay? That's not needed. Okay? So the squeeze principle, what is that principle says? Okay? Again, this is a textbook thing. So let's put it in a textbook way, so which I hate the most, so let's go for the textbook thing. So if it is F X less than equal to G X less than equal to H X. So in our case, this is X sine one by X, this is the plus mod and this is the minus mod. Yeah? So these are the three things over here, they are the good boys for all X. Near. X equal to A. If F X tends to N. And H X tends to also N as X tends to A, in our case it was zero. Then.
Sir, why we took in last?
G X equal to L as X tends to A. So all we have to take one simple value that is extends to zero. So we try to find out that where these two functions are squeezed into. Now there is no formula for finding. So you need to identify these two functions as close as it. Okay? And after identification of this function, whenever we see that three functions are there and we try to find out the middle function. And this is squeezed into these two functions. And there is a point where X tends to A, here in our case X tends to zero and the function giving us the same value, these two functions, the squeezer functions giving us the same value. So the squeezed in function will give the same value as well. Okay? So it's just like that in a normal colloquial way, if two things pushes something and they fell into water, so the middle thing will also fell into water. So I will be going through some of the examples of it, you will be understanding it much more evaluated way as well. So it would be easier for you. And remember that this is like a normal squeezing principle, but as some of you are having some expansion related problem. So let me just tell you one or two things. So can anyone tell me what is the value of this? One plus X plus X square by two. What is the value of this? One minus X.
Minus X plus X square by two minus.
Yeah, so what is log of one plus X? This one minus X. So this all minus. This one minus X, so this all minus. What is A to the power X? One plus X log A, X log A square by factorial two. Then three by three. Yeah, so please write it down, sometimes it is not written on internet also, kitavon me to diya rehta hi nahi hai. So three factorial X five by five factorial, you may need to go to your class seven eight books for this. Even seven eight, the thal isha, eleven twelve remain. One minus X square by two, even in that cases, some of the things were not given properly. So some of you are missing this part, so thought of giving you, tan X was bit hard, X plus X square by three. And then two by fifteen X to the power five, don't ask me how I'm getting this value, so for that again I have to go to class eleven twelve classes. Then sine of hyperbolic X uh X X square by three factorial X five by five factorial. Uh sine about cos hyperbolic X uh so. Two, four, tan hyperbolic X uh. And sine inverse X. X plus X square two into three. Uh then one into three into its five, uh make it that two four five. Then one, three, five, X seven and make it that two, four, six, seven, okay? Cos inverse we as I said, I'm not writing much, okay, one more thing I'm forgetting which is very important for our case. One plus X hold to the power X, so one plus N X plus N into N minus one by two factorial into X square. Simple binomial but yet very effective. Yeah, so we know in limiting values we can apply L hospital rule or we know it as L hospital, hospital bolt they have. Because S is silent anyway, uh so that kind of things will become very, very handy. So some of the things in limiting values which we will be using many times in many questions, some of you have missed out. So I thought of giving you a brief roundup on that thing, one or two things, limit extends to zero, one plus X hold to the power N. Minus one by X, so this is equal to N and limit extends to zero. Uh this is sine X by X equal to limit extends to zero, cos X by X, so that is equal to zero as well, okay? So these are the basic things you should remember, so let's try to get into directly now some important questions. So limit is all about this uh removable continuity discontinuity. Okay, now the basic thing about the real analysis which comes into examination is their sequential pattern. Okay, so which is the supremo and infima, okay, again those who have forgotten supremo equal to L U B. Infima equal to G L V, okay, S L I G. So now every time we face up this kind of functions, so where we can reach? Okay. Can you tell me what I talk about, what I can say about this sequence? What are these sequences? Is there any kind of similarity between them? These are all called Naal sequences. Why? Because limit N tends to infinity, A N equal to zero. Limit N tends to infinity, A N equal to zero.
At least converting sequences.
Yeah, this is a Naal sequence, it said to be a Naal sequence if it is converges to zero, yeah, you are right. So obviously it is converging, but converges to zero, so we will be calling it a Naal sequence. Because in sometimes this kind of small terms can be very important. For example, if B N is a Naal sequence and A N less than equal to B N, then A N is also a Naal sequence. Okay? So basic understanding.
The the squeeze, the squeeze principle.
Yeah, that's squeeze principle. Uh so we will be dodging the very basic proofs, okay? Like Quach's first theorem of limit, Quach's second theorem of limit, the bookish kind of a thing. And we will be directly jumping onto those thing that can which actually comes into examination. Okay, uh one of the theorem which actually not been Caesaros theorem actually, Caesaros theorem is being done. So let me just tell you one thing about that, that for example if limit N tends to infinity, A N equal to A, limit N tends to infinity. B N equal to B, then limit N tends to infinity, uh A one B N, A two B N minus one. Dot dot dot, A N B one is uh A N equal to A. So this is one, okay? So if a sequence A is oscillating finitely and B N equal to zeros and obviously their product will be zero. Okay, so there will be a lot of similar cases we will be finding afterwards, okay? So you need to practice from these zones I will be doing now, uh let's talk about the convergence structure first. So there are comparison tests, there are telescopic test, all these different tests, ratio test. But what is the, I will be starting our journey with respect to one understanding. So when it comes to any sequential structure, limit N tends to infinity, U N by U N plus one. Sometimes in books it is written as limit N tends to infinity, U N plus one by U N. So it is all the same, lekin yahan par agar greater than one hu, or yahan par greater than one hu, so the law and cheek also change. If in your book you will see U N greater than U N plus one, so this is U N actually U N plus one. So previous term is greater than the higher sum, so this is the decreasing thing, isn't it? But here U N plus one, so this makes it infinite. Toh aapko ye nahi dekhna ki greater than or less than sir, you need to check whether is U N plus one or U N, okay?
Sorry, is the ratio test?
Yeah, sorry, yeah, it's the D element ratio test. So even every test, jaise malla rabbit test, rabbit ne kya kaha? So in rabbit's test also you see limit N tends to infinity, N, U N by U N plus one minus one equal to N. Okay, so if it is greater than one, then it is a convergent, less than one, it's a divergent. As it is U N by U N plus one, if this thing is reversed, so the entire thing changes. So our convenience, we will be following this U N by U N plus one formula everywhere. So I'll be writing it in this format, here, in the logarithmic test, logarithmic test will be limited, sorry, limit N tends to infinity. N log U N by U N plus one equal to one, that's the basic thing, so equal to K. And K greater than one, less than, rest of the stuff is all the same. But you know what is the biggest problem, biggest pain in our heart is the Gauss test. Gauss test, hume samajh bhi nahi aata hai ki kaha se start kare, kaha khatam kare. Toh aaj ka class bhi khatam hoga, ye ajibon varhi chisse, jiska naam hai Gauss test. This pure chapter mean, the entire chapter, the only test which is a little bit confusing is the Gauss test. So Gauss said that uh U N by U N plus one, toh ke aap log aise likh sakte hai, alpha beta by N. And R N by N to the power. Means this is like the useless part for this, where T is greater than one, okay? So he said that if alpha greater than one. Okay, if alpha greater than one, but alpha beta two constant and R N is a bounded series, this is a bounded series. So according to Gauss says alpha greater than one, so the summation of U N is a convergent structure. If alpha less than one, summation of U N is a divergent structure. Now if alpha equal to one, then we talk about beta. So then it is convergent again. And if alpha equal to one and beta less than one, we talk about a divergent. But what happens if both are equal to one, anyone know? Then also it's a divergent one, so this is the only test which never fails. Or is your rabbit's test, Quach's test, sequential test, ratio test, logarithmic test, all the test fails is equal to one hundred. And we think about some other tests, but Gauss test never fails. How is it been done? Okay, mala de, let's talk about this. Uh we can get any uh function for this thing. So let it be U N by U N plus one karne sahka rahe, X to the power minus one by N plus one, yeah? And at X equal to one by E, you need to check the convergence and divergence. So let's put X equal to one by T over here. So this becomes U N by U N plus one will be giving you E to the power one by N plus one, the minus is gone, I can equal understand. So minus one by E goes up, this minus goes down, minus one this, so this is plus. Yeah?
Can you explain it again, sir?
U N by U N plus one is X to the power minus one by this, at X equal to one by E. So they want to check whether the system is convergent or divergent, here. So what I'm putting is, I'm putting X equal to one by E and I'm getting this E by one by N plus one, yeah? Now, if we go for the value now, so first value is uh here we are putting from zero to this. So first value, if we talk about the power here only, okay, so the power values if we are talking about. Remember that here U N by N N plus one, how you can represent, hey? So we can represent this like one by N plus one, this is the E to the power X formula, bhul gaya, abhi kia to. See, remember? What is E to the power X, first value chahe kuchh bhi ho jaana hoga. Second value is. X hoga, means jo power hoga, aur value bhi hoga.
X square by two.
Yeah, yeah, that's good, now it's great that I have written that part. Save me, so E to the power one by N plus one is one plus one by N plus one. Plus.
One by two factorial in two N plus one.
Square, very good. Ab dhyan se dekhiye. Uh here you can see alpha and beta by A, you can see the square. So square cube jo bhi hai toh ye wahan par chalaya. So Gauss have taken all the squares and cubes, so we can go for the third value. What will be the third value, one by? Hello, I've bhul gaya.
Three into three factorial.
Yeah, so according to this, X square by three factorial. Yeah, so kya likhenge, one by six, nah?
Yes, sir.
Six N plus one cube.
Yeah, so we can go for the next one which is twenty four N plus one four, so anyway we can keep on going. But anyway, this is not needed here because the Gauss is all about first power, zero power, that's it. So let's report it, so one by N plus one and one by N plus one square. And this thing will be one by two factorial, one by three factorial into N plus one. And order, yeah?
Yes, you have taken one by N plus one square common.
Yeah, very good, so from this two I have taken from. Now things will become a little bit more easy, if we just go to this. So this thing is less than one by, one by N plus one, one by N plus one square. And one by N plus one, Q dot dot dot. We can remove this value, so this value is higher and that will be producing, means if it is A less than B, so that is producing something less value. And even if we just report it, so this is what? A one plus one by X, one by X square, one by X square. So it looks like what? Infinite GP, so what is the formula? A by one minus R, isn't it? So what is A? A, one, what is R?
One of course N plus one.
Yeah, one by N plus one, very nice, so this is equal to N plus one by A, and so this is one plus one by N, correct? So now if we go to our Gauss formula, Gauss says this is alpha.
This is gonna be divergent.
Alpha plus beta by N plus something, something. We got our something, something parts, actually I've removed that part, I could have directly done it from this zone also. So anyway, this is alpha equal to one and beta equal to one according to our formula, this is a divergent structure according to the Gauss test. So Gauss test is just about expanding it and the removal of it, clear? So we can say it like this uh.
Sir, I'm single doubt, how did you like determine that it is less than in starting one?
Which one?
Yeah, yes, in this third step, less than one plus N.
Oh yeah, yeah, it's very easy, so first part is same, second part is same, first part is same, second part is same, I've taken this part home, okay? And this is the value, and now what I'm doing is, so I'm removing some sections of it and directly I'm putting, giving you this value. So won't it be giving you lesser value because I'm just reducing the power of the denominator? So what is higher? N plus one is obviously, sorry, less than N plus one whole, isn't it?
Yes, sir, yes.
Yeah, in that. So U N equal to one by N square, so can we say it about the Gauss, whether it's a convergent or divergent, it's pretty easy. So you go for U N by U N plus one, it's like an N plus one by N square uh. So this is one plus two Y N plus one by N square. So all we are getting is alpha equal to one, beta equal to two, so this is a convergent structure, isn't it? So every time, no matter, I will, in the next class, we will take out some very tough questions, some big questions as well on this. And we will be trying to solve them all by this same kind of applications, okay? So any kind of test, rearrangement of term test, derivatives test. So aap logo ka kam hai homework me, ye test ke baarm se keh, test dekhiye rekhiye, so don't ask me to do it like a graduation class, I will do it all from the beginning. Okay, but I will try my level best to go for it, one after another, because there are only one or two theorems which is a little bit confusing. Like the Riemann's theorem, okay, I don't know Riemann ka sabhi kuchh kitna confusing ki? For example, Riemann has made an integrational rule, it's called the Riemann integration. And even spelling is very much confusing, so uh spelling is R I P A N N, okay? Uh so Riemann has said a theorem uh by appropriate rearrangement of term. So if I appropriate rearrangement of term, are conditionally convergent series, are conditionally. Convergence series, summation of U N can be made. To converge to any number sigma or. To diverge to plus infinity or to oscillate finitely. Or to diverge to minus infinity or to oscillate in manner. These are the five possibilities. So how Riemann is being associated into this, I can let me just give an example, okay? So they said that, if a sequence is here, one minus R, one third, it's a good looking sequence, very familiar. And they said, any rearrangement of the terms of, this is conditionally convergence, you see? Now rearrangement of these terms, let me just put it like this, one plus half plus one by three dot dot dot. Minus two into one by two, one by four, one by six, plus dot dot. So this is a proper rearrangement of this term. Yeah, perfect. Now, this thing will be one plus half plus one third dot dot dot. Minus one plus half plus one third dot dot. So this gives you zero, hence the series converges to zero. So this given series is conditionally convergent and hence can be made to converge to any limit by a rearrangement of the terms. Okay, so this is the kind of series. Let me just talk about something different.
Sir, can you take an example of a series of squares?
Uh better than that, I have a better example, let's talk about a D arrangement. Whereas square and then that when you say, so let's talk about a rearrangement in the same way. So, what rearrangement of the series will reduce its sum to zero? So, what rearrangement is required? Remember that it is conditionally convergent with sum. So, the series, remember that previous case also the same thing we had. So, one minus half plus one third, so this thing, conditionally the structure is minus one or to the power one by n by one by n. So, this conditionally convergent with respect to a sum of log two. And we can go for a rearrangement structure of it. So, let me talk about the, let's, we talk about the rearrangement in the next class. What is the arrangement? For example, if we go about that letter and envelope example. Amlaunse ko pronunciation karate envelope, but the pronunciation is envelope. Okay, anyway, entrepreneur envelope, very English is a very complicated subject. Sometimes the pronunciations are even more complicated and the tongue of them is far more complicated than that. What else? So, there are four letters, four envelopes, what is that? Proper way to put it incorrect one, there is only one way, right? All the letters are there. Now, the rearrangement set, all the letters are in wrong places. Okay, all the letters are in wrong places that the rearrangement. So, first letter. Can go to how many places there? Any idea? Three places, three jaga chhoge, koi bhi tini jaga me jayega. Second letter ke pass bhi jana ke liye tini hi jaga hai, third letter ke pass bhi jana ke liye tini, fourth letter ke pass bhi jana ke liye tini, three, three, three. So, three to the power, four possible ways, so eighty one ways you can put it in a row. So, this is the rearrangement in a very easy way. So, how rearrangement can be represented via functioning sequence? So, that will be the main matter of discussion because this is kind of a really tough set we will be working on. But remember that this takes another one session for me. Okay, one thing I may forget, last class, I think on Tuesday. The class was taken by Professor Shukh Omal Chatterjee. So, how you guys find that session quite interesting or bit basic or bit advanced or you find it okayish or you find it bad? So, tell me.
It was good sir, sir was explaining nicely.
Uh huh. Was it a little bit fast like me? Or the concepts are, okay na?
Yes sir.
Yes sir, it was good.
Yes sir.
Okay.
The theory part was good.
Yeah, sorry, what?
The theory part was good.
Yeah, okay, so as he's a senior professor, so the problem with junior professors like us, we always directly jump into the actual application of the thing. Where we can do it, where the actual cream is, okay. We can't just wait, so this is the problem with youth. But with senior professors, they sometimes just, the theoretical portions will be explained very well. So, that's why I have requested him, he used to take the junior ISI B stat and for the PhD sessions classes, he used to visit and take these sessions. So, I'm especially requesting us, because he's also attended many universities right now. So, sometimes his classes will be a little bit fluctuating, but I will try to always rearrange those sessions with him. Okay. See. Okay, very interesting question from we are here. So, what is this monotone all the time people say? Mono is nothing but one. Okay, monolithic, monologous, monotonic, so it's like one way. Like monotonous. So, all the same thing. So, it's monotone and convergent. So, if it is always greater than something, x is always greater than two, so it's actually a monotonic. So, if it is a d dx is, if d s x is greater than zero, so it's a monotonic increasing. It's not that thing in the fluctuating structure. Okay, so we will be working on the monotone pattern a little bit more on this. And limiting of the sequence, so let me see some good questions that is given here. Yeah, limit will play, why limit will play a crucial role? Let me just give you an example for this question. Aap logonki exam ka naam suna nahi hoga shayad, NBHM, naam suna hai?
What is this sir, NBHM?
Anyone? Ne, ne to pata hai dunga, but what is NBHM? It's about mathematics, obviously. This is actually a National Board of Higher Mathematics, okay. NBHM conducts two type of examination, it's actually Government of India under the Department of Atomic Energy. So, if you want a part of that, if you want to become a part of that, started in nineteen eighty-three, okay. And there are two NBHM examination, one is a master's examination and one is a PhD examination. Very rarely people give this examination because of very hardness of the question paper. Okay, so Department of Atomic Energy does it. So, I started teaching this course a little bit long back, okay. So, in this NBHM course, I tried to introduce these kind of structures, okay. But one big problem with NBHM is. Biggest problem with NBHM is, the hardness of the question is way above this. So, one question I have taken it from Engage in my personal collection. You can also search in on internet, there is a lot of question papers you will find. If you don't find it, I will give you that. So, there are some good books and there is also another intense examination that is T I F R G S math. Okay. Ye thora sa peechi tha question paper banane ke liye famous. Sari question papers aapko karni ka zarrot nahi, aise hi if you are a math buff, you can give it a try on this, okay. Whether you give it that examination or not, but their question papers are good. So, iska value kya, yeh pucha. And after that, they also asked that, ke bhaiya, ye bhi nikali. Okay, it came in NBHM ka paper, agar aap dekhenge, dohazar sulaamay tha. I am the only, not the only one, but waha the rarest people who have the, who have solved the ITF papers and uploaded it, okay. So, you can have a look, okay, I don't know whether all the uploads are freely available on internet or not. Okay, so NBHM ke upar ye ek sawal se aajka kam khatam. Okay, it's not that hard question, but it will tell you ke limit kitna zarroti. It's not a hard question at all, but let's see. A n three, this thing. So, here we will be applying a squeeze theorem a little bit high, one by n. So, this will be, okay, this will be, they have given, this is equal to three by five, ye diya hua. Okay, and they asked us to compute this. So, this is three by five. Given, very good. Let's put a limit entrance to infinity both side. So, if you just after doing this, one concept comes in. That if you do it, limit enters to infinity, three by five, all to the part n, so this will become zero. And this power is gone. So, the very next line we can write. When I'm both side, limit ke upar limit lehi saktes, so you don't have to need to write it again. So, n minus two by n and remember that, yaapar limit abhi gone, okay? And this part is giving you zero, yeah? Next, limit enters to infinity, a n, this is three, n by n is one, minus two, sorry, plus of minus two. One by n, whole n, equal to zero. Limit enters to infinity, a n, this minus comes out, it's three. Sorry. Minus three. One plus minus two, one by n whole n. Okay, so this thing equal to zero. Now, the by the definition of a convergent series. A n leads to minus three, one plus minus two, by n whole to the power eight, as it tells to infinity. So, this is nothing but minus three into e to the power minus two. Ye pata hai? Ne pata hai? Chaliye, yes, par ko bhi thora se aur explain kar dete. The explanation is I have one plus a by n whole to the power n by n, because to e to the power a, it enters with. Here, so that I have written here, so three to the power minus two. So, hence, limit enters to infinity, a n is minus three, e to the power minus two or minus three by e square. So, two concepts, which is the key to success over here in this particular engagement question. So, there will be a lot of NBHM questions, I will be choosing and another interest examination, which is CMI. E G masters examination, I S I M math paper. So, only one question is not enough. For example, jab hum log B S A T karate hai, toh hum log ek special examination karate, uska naam hai Putna. So, Putna examination is very high level examination. So, Putna is the kind of paper, this is the subjective questions B S A T me copy kiya hai. So, we try to do that, we try to do that Russian mathematical Olympiad, Chinese mathematical Olympiad, direct question. So, they are also the same thing and at higher level also this. Toh mujhe hamesha aisa lakti tha, ke koi koi math main itna acha ho kaise jaa? Hum log toh ho nahi pate. So, then, I in my later years, like in eleven twelve main aisa figure out kiya, ke it's not like you do it from one book. You know, from our childhood days, professors used to tell our school teacher main yehi kaha tha. Till one book you do properly and you can solve any question in the world.
Yes, even now in graduation time, this is same.
Yeah, isn't it? Toh main senior professor ka soch main bata tha, I could have written, ye sah wrong hai, mat karo, gade hai, aisa bilkul nahi hai. What is their thinking? They thought that you will do that one book so very keen and deeply, that every page you will take around ten days to finish. Yeh hum log aise nahi karte. So, it was a concept in the nineteen sixties, seventies, where the study was done in that way. There was not, several things were available. Yes, ek hai, the derivative life, sorry, lifesaver for differentiation. So, this is a book. So, they have given all the possible impeccable things about the differentiations. It's not available on Amazon, you can only get it at a second-hand bookstore. It's not PDFs are not available. I have the book, okay. So, now at that time, they used to study from this, but nowadays, we are not that deep into mathematics. We just directly jump into the questions and we try to solve it. So, as a result of that, our knowledge cannot go this much deep. Especially when you guys are coming to me in order to study this thing and my time is less, very less every time. So, I also jump into the different things. So, I cannot suggest you to go for that way. And if I tell you that, yeah, one book, so which is that book, isn't it? Which book is? So, if I say it's a Bartlett Sherwood, I would say no. I don't think that is. So, you say, okay sir, this book I would say no, then I would say no, so I would say no. So, you end up already studying four books, isn't it? So, the concept right now is, let's study from different examination and their papers. Let's all, let's remind yourself every time that how weak you are in a particular thing and every time you evolve with a higher thing. So, our story and our class ends up with a very classic thing about. I, it would have been best if I have shown you that clip, it's actually from a movie. Anyone heard this movie? Anyone?
Yes sir.
Okay, who, who is the actor?
Sir Brad.
Edward Norton and Brad Pitt, right?
Yeah, thank God, you guys didn't say Zayed Khan.
Helena Bonham Carter.
Yeah, so we talk about the main two characters, which are actually the juxtaposition of the same character, we figured out at the end. But now, while giving you that example of a fight club, not about the fights I'm talking about. So, it's about when someone. From the cancer survival team wants to become a part of their fight club, okay? So, if you have not seen the thing, so let me just talk about, someone has made a club. Okay, and they don't take unknown people. And it's actually at the middle of the movie, where there is a door, okay, and a person is waiting. I want to be added in your team. So, now, the fight club has become a bigger club and they want to change the society. So, they are taking people, but not very in a proper way, okay, come, join India and I will not like that. So, someone comes in, they said, no, there is nothing club like that, please go. So, he is waiting, waiting two days, three days, har din juda khara hai, barish me khara hai, kuchh nahi hai. Fourth day, after the fourth day, now Edward Norton comes out and he says that, do you have a pair of socks? Two pairs of socks, okay? Do you have two pairs of dresses, two pairs of shoes? Okay, then you are in. In the next day, second day, sorry, in the fourth day. One of the friend, one of a fat friend from the cancer survival team comes, when he got to know about this club. And he was also inspired by this man and he started standing. First day, he stand, he stood and everyone comes out and he says, there is nothing club like this, we are not taking people, you can go home. And he said, okay, but someone told me that there is a club, I can become a part of it, so he started walking away. Although he stopped him, okay, and took him aim because he knew him, but the story's moral part is this. Are you this man? Or you are this man? Are this person or you this person? So, this is very important. So, whether you are doing all these different mathematical Olympiad, every day you are understanding you are nothing. You are getting, you are missing out, you are sending me the questions, maybe I am also not helping. Maybe you are getting it, trying to get it from internet, you are posting it to Ulfam Alpha, you are asking your friends at any other coaching center. You are very confused, you are very angry with everything, but you are not leaving that question. You are not leaving that paper, you are not thinking, okay, I thought sir told me, let's go. So, you are not the second person. I am the first person. I hope you are, or you, obviously, we know that we are the first person. We want to become the first person, but we, in our heart, we know that we are the second person, isn't it? So, let's try to create a journey from this second person hood to the first person. It will take some time, like seven days, like ten days, twelve days. But every time when you keep on reminding yourself that I am going to stand over here, no matter what, okay? So, this is kind of a thing. It starts with removing your Netflix subscription. It may start with removing your name from the groups, which is irritating. It may be removing the games which you play with your friends. It may be reducing your total amount of time which you spend on doing nothing. Or texting your friend or girlfriend or boyfriend. So, these are the type of hardest things which you need to do. And suddenly, you will find yourself on the fourth day outside the door where obviously Edward Norton is not going to open the door. But someone will open the door for you, that maybe I S I Dean will come and welcome you. If you're hitting the I T entrance, he will come and open the gate for you. And when those gates open, rest of the gates open very easily. You give, we take my example is the same thing, okay? And unfortunately, there is no book for solution of these things are available. But even if it is available, one or two person have tried, so they have not provided all the solutions. Sometimes with the hints only, it's a little bit confusing sometimes. But remember that the only person who is going to stand with you is you, no one else, okay? Don't take it as a jyahn. So, every time when you are going to, next day, we will be working with this comparison and sequential test. I will ask Professor Shukh Omal Chatterjee to solve some questions for you as well in the next session. So that it becomes a little bit more interesting from the all mechanism, okay? And we can work on this power series altogether. And remember that Taylor series expansion and all these things will also become handy as well. So, please, please give it a try and let's do it, okay? So, that's it for tonight, it's mostly eleven ten forty-five, it's mostly your dinner time. So, we'll meet again very soon and always keep a cross check on your WhatsApp and the emails, sometimes I tell you about the classes, okay? That's it for today and the class has been recorded and it will be uploaded tonight and you'll be able to see it in the portal from tomorrow. Thank you.